All right, so thank you for joining us this evening for the May seventeen twenty twenty two Montessorino City Council Meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, the microphone is live, so please keep the microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, you are using Zoom to host the city council meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and ring cam. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and able to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak for agenda item. Email limited to three hundred fifty words can be submitted to a city clerk and will be read into the record. This word limit is set to hear the typical three-minute turnaround. Only attendees using Zoom application can use the ring cam option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or to the comment. And lastly, because we're not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by law.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order. I noticed there's a hand up, but we probably get to that once we get started. Pledge of allegiance, if you could have, Councilor Liz Lawler, please recite that for us.
All right, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any changes? I'm sorry, is there a roll call? Yeah, roll call time. If you could go ahead and take a roll call, you're on mute. Can you hear me?
There we go. Councilmember Lawler?
Present.
Councilmember Luebe?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protim, mic check?
Present.
Mayor LaHue?
Present. Thank you. So orders of the day, are there any changes in the orders of the day? Does anybody request any changes we made? Hearing none. And I guess I have a hand up with Mr. Cardo Le- Le- Lever? I hope I pronounced it right. Is that the request, changing the orders of the day, or is it for general comments that come in later on? Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I'm I'm here because I think the last time I wasn't very clear on a I saw that there's a mentioning of the emergency operating center on a press article. And it was also mentioned in the justification for the remodeling of the next door building.
All right, let's let's do this then when we get to, because it's not an agenda, but there is a item for oral communication, so we'll can hear you at that time, if you don't mind.
How long roughly from now?
I imagine about five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So presentations, why are there any other changes for the orders of the day? Not, I'm going to go ahead and do the presentation, the one is on the Palestinian Cultural Day proclamation. This proclamation basically recognizes the Palestinian Cultural Day. And it is in was part of the minutes and everything that was presented, but basically recognizes that they've been part of the Silicon Valley and have been living there, living here for a number of years. And so the city of, council of the city of Montsino, as you hear, I proclaim May fifteenth as the Palestinian Cultural Day in Senator County. And I would ask that proclamation be made part of the minutes of this meeting. Thank you. All right, next item we have is presentation for the West Valley Community Services. If you could go ahead with that. I assume somebody is present from the West Valley Community Services.
Yes, we just promoted.
Yes, you got those your last time, so now.
Thank you so much. I'm going to try to share my screen. I apologize, let me just see what's happening here. Thank you so much for this opportunity to present about West Valley Community Services. Our West Valley Community Services are local nonprofits supporting residents in the West Valley region. Our mission is to unite the community to fight hunger and homelessness. And our vision is a community where every person has food on their table and a roof over their head. Our core clientele, our residents of West Valley, we serve a multicultural, multilingual community. The composition of clients are single adults, couples, families, seniors, actress, youth, disabled, domestic violence survivor, homeless or unhoused. The income eligibility of a client, we gave, I'm giving an example of who's accessing our services. They fall in the two hundred seventy-five percentile of federal poverty level. And that's about thirty-two thousand individual income or sixty-five thousand five hundred for a family income. Our core services, we are a critical safety net service program is food shopping, as you see in the picture. This is our client shopping in our food pantry, which we designed it like a mini Trader Joe's. We have a food delivery program, a rental assistance program, housing referral and support, affordable housing program, family support and homeless services. Along with that, we have other supportive services for clients, which includes financial coaching, case management and system navigation through public benefits, information and referral, education and advocacy and employment coaching. All of these additional programs helps client to move towards self-sufficiency. Our approach is in three parts, it's crisis intervention. So we make sure that we can evict prevention or a utility shut off. We help reduce food cost, it's kind of asset preservation, so clients can save that money towards rent and other basic needs. Short-term intervention includes to keep the clients stably housed, we provide case management, debt, consolidation, creating a savings plan for our client and exploring other income and employment opportunity. In our self-sufficiency model, we try to develop and implement a plan that supposes the client's self-sufficiency by just making sure that they are connected to public benefits, to our services and are getting the overall support that they need. Last two years, we have been working on a theory of change. And this, the slides are all shared with you, with the staff. And the theory of change, we are trying to come up with an hypothesis that if clients who are at different levels in their life, whether in crisis, vulnerable, stable, by providing the services that I mentioned, the food, the basic need support, eviction prevention, homeless supportive services and connecting the community to resources and education. We are basing the hypothesis is if these clients are connected to our services, we see them moving towards self-sufficiency and the ultimate goal of ours would be to end hunger and homelessness. And we do all of this, keeping in mind our values, which is compassion, dignity, integrity, service, diversity and ingenuity. These are the basic annual report numbers that we reported out and wanted to share with you. These are the new clients who came for us first time, we had about a thousand two hundred seven households who accessed the services for the first time. We had about three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight men and women and children assisted through all the programs that I shared about the meals, we tried to talk about the food that we provide in terms of meals. And this is how many meals that we were able to help support a family, again, to prevent hunger and homelessness. And that's the rental assistance dollars that we helped last year, in the last two years, because of COVID, we've been able to support more and more family and prevent evictions. This is our annual wide housing composition data. I will not go data slide by slide, so if you have any questions, I can refer back to the slide. So as you see, we serve a very diverse community. This is our financial assistance number, as you know that in the past two years, because of COVID, we have assisted more clients in more dollars. A few households have received up to twenty thousand dollars of past due rent. This is the back-to-school program that Montessorino has supported us, so thank you so much. And as you've seen in the past few years, we have seen an increase in enrollment of children in this program. This program is, it happens in August. And last year, due to COVID, we had to do it in a form of drive-through backpack pickup and gift cards to Old Navy. But this year, we are able to go back to shopping, taking the kids shopping to Old Navy and providing them with backpacks filled with appropriate grade level of school supplies. This is some pictures of the back-to-school program. And here I would like to read a client's story about Quinn. Quinn is a single mother of two. And Quinn came to us, she she migrated to the United States about four to five years ago. Quinn was excited to be in America and give her family a life that she wanted. However, shortly after landing in America, Quinn was faced with a reality that she was going to be struggling financially and facing a significant language barrier. Quinn's husband went back to Vietnam a few months after they arrived, due to his mother being sick. Quinn was basically a single mom and had to manage by herself. She was fortunate enough to be staying with her aunt rent-free. Quinn was referred to West Valley Community Services by our aunt and has been using West Valley services ever since. When it was time to register her children for back-to-school, Quinn realized that she did not know what all the supplies were needed for school. When she heard about our program, Quinn felt relief because W V C S was able to provide her children with the necessary school supply as well as clothing for children. Quinn has been registering for back-to-school program and all the special program events ever since then. Every year, Quinn and her kids look forward to her back-to-school event for shopping experience with amazing volunteers. Quinn says her family is extremely grateful for West Valley Community Services because we were able to support her during the toughest time and continue to provide that support. This is kind of pictures about our two operations. We have a pocket market operation which goes to the West Valley communities. So we cover Los Gatos, Saratoga and Best San Jose. We are in two community colleges. We are in three school and one school district. And we are in two affordable housing community. This van that you see, we call it the pocket market, has the ability for clients to shop. It's like a market, they shop and also has the ability to do case management. The other picture that you see is a volunteer stocking up our W V C S market, where some clients are able to come and shop for food. That was the last of my presentation and open to any questions.
Thank you very much. The work you're doing is amazing and tremendous and appreciate your being able to come back to us. I know you were here a little bit early last, last week, a couple of weeks ago. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Win Catraman? I hope I'm saying that right.
You did, yeah, you did good, thank you.
I'm sorry, did I see a hand up, somebody? Yeah, let's see, Councilor Lawler, let me put a mic check, please go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the great presentation. I'm always so impressed with with West Valley Community Services. We're so fortunate to have your agency in our neighborhood. I wanted to ask you if you've seen a real uptick in the need for food assistance due to inflation over recent months and how significant has that been?
So, yeah, we we just did our survey, a client survey, and forty-two percent of our clients are saying that they are coming to our food pantry on a weekly basis. And that's a huge uptake from last few years. And like I said, the food pantry really helps choose clients to save money. And because of the increase in housing and cost of living and increase in food prices, the food pantry is one of our most seeked-out service.
All right, thanks. And is the food supply able to keep up with the demand?
We do different kind of sourcing, so we have the food bank that's providing the foods. About sixty-five to seventy percent of our food comes from the local food bank, Second Harvest. And then we do source out from different local stores. We've been thankful, yeah, we've had some issues with food sourcing and we've been working that out with different partners and different agencies to figure out a way when there is a drop in in some of the supplies.
All right, thank you.
Mayor Protim, mic check, please.
First of all, I would like to compliment you and your agency on the work that you do. Thank you for for a comprehensive report. My question for you is, do your clients pay for water in addition to their rent? Or is their water bill included in their rent? And you may or may not know that.
Some clients do, but majority of the clients, they have to pay for water.
Oh, so they have to pay for water in addition to their rent?
Yes. So if it is affordable, if it's an affordable unit and if it is like a tax credit unit, those have utility included in it, but majority of like if it's a regular apartment, fair market, then water is not included, they have to pay.
Okay, are you, are your clients getting any assistance on their water bills?
So we we are part of a state water assistance program and it's also run by Sacred Heart. So we do apply for assistance through that program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, Councilor Lutal, please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm obviously food is probably one of the most critical priorities in the rental assistance you've provided. But I'm wondering, given the the other crisis that we see developing with fuel prices, just just gasoline prices for vehicles, whether that's something that you might be interested in expanding into? And whether there, if if it is, whether there's thinking about that, whether this is something that we could go to the state and and try to really route some help for for your clientele through your agency in in the form of gas cards or something. Because obviously people aren't going to be able to wait around for six months or a year when they need to get to their jobs and support their families and get their kids to school. So is there anything that you see an opportunity and is there any way that we or our citizens can help you on that?
Absolutely, there's always opportunity for advocacy around like transportation, because all these services are related. If if you know, if clients cannot have an access to transportation, they cannot get to work or even come to us or even do their basic, you know, needs be met. With that said, there is a proposal that the governor is proposing right now to provide some kind of gas relief. If there is an advocacy or a bill that comes in, I will share it with the council so that we can do joint advocacy around that. What we are doing is simple efforts, we got some funding to provide gas cards and we are only doing it for clients absolutely need who are just not able to get to. So we do have a short-term gas assistance, we also do a bus pass assistance. So we have a reduced bus pass program where we are giving the V T A bus passes for twenty-five dollars. Sometime we are able to even subsidize that for clients. The other goal of ours is providing rental assistance and in which way we feel like that offsets some of the other costs. So since we have received a lot of support from the state for rental assistance, we've been able to do a lot of outreach and get more clients into that support, which helps them save some assets for other expenses. But I do appreciate you, if there is advocacy needed, which transportation is one of our advocacy arena, we will definitely reach out to the council for support.
Great, and thank you. And also a follow-up, I think you mentioned at the beginning, and it went past me a little quickly, that you're you've you're working on a program on really the educational side with your clients on budgeting and on these things. Is that something that you're expanding? You're just testing it now, what are what are the plans for that and how can we help improve that? Because obviously that's really getting people on their feet.
Yeah, that's that's the goal. We are getting into our strategic plan next year. So our goal is as an agency, as a board, really look at the education piece, the board is invested in that. We do feel like for our clients to reach self-sufficiency, there has to be some form of education. So we were doing these as pilots, now we are using the learnings from these programs to see how we can either expand, change based on the learnings that we have received.
Great, thank you. Councilor Turner, please go ahead.
Ah, yes, I was wondering with the the almost double-digit rate of inflation that we're seeing today. When you look at the supply chain and a lot of the shortages that we're having, what are you, your needs and and in particular, I'm interested in the baby formula, the shortages in baby formula as well as the grain that we would normally get from Ukraine and Russia. Can you make a comment on those, please?
So let me talk about baby formula. So the baby formula at the market has been based on donation, so it's it's not a constant supply, it's off and on. And so for for food pantries like us, we don't see it all the time. And we were very glad that we did a huge food drive in December and that helped us to fill some of the supplies, not on baby formula, but other items that we might we might see going down. We are, we are not seeing any impact of any supply chain issues at this point. We are getting support from the food bank and the local stores, so we are able to sustain the basic needs of our clients through our market. And we are working on a lot of advocacy and with other organization, just to make sure that food pantries are supplied with the basic staples and we are not seeing a shortage at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think it was an excellent presentation. I'm always curious, I mean, you guys do so much work and your volunteer is really helping out a lot. What is, what is the difference, what is the cost of administering the program, administering the program? If you collect a thousand dollars and how much do you pay out for your services and how much is used by in-house administration?
So as if you look at our budget, the majority of our budget goes to just direct cost for clients. We are a staff of now thirty, so of course there will be administrative cost of it, but we try to reduce it by making sure that majority of our funding that we raise goes to direct programs and program support. And you brought it up in one way we leverage, so like the food pantry is run by volunteers. So there is, except for two or three staff, the entire operation is run by about sixty to seventy volunteers on a weekly basis. And so we try to reduce the cost of certain of our programs by leveraging volunteers. So our our financials, that way, it's it's quite balanced with not putting a lot of money on administration cost. But we we do need administration cost, you need staff to run the program. So we built it in in a way that we we are giving, you know, competitive salaries to our staff so that they can stay and continue the work and also provide the assistance that our clients need. So I hope I answered your question.
Well, you did, I mean, you're doing amazing amount of work, but I would like to see if you can get some actual numbers.
I can, I can give you the actual numbers from our annual report.
And just email it to us at some point, that'd be fine.
Absolutely, we can do that.
If it's on your website anywhere, that'd be fine.
It is on our website, I can put the link on my website is under financial, so I can do that.
Yeah, yeah, just send us a, just email something, but but you guys are doing an amazing amount of job, if you're all here to support you as much as possible. And it's something that's really needed at this time. Are there any other questions or comments? Are there any members of the public who have any questions? If not, I think we can close this item and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate this partnership with Montessorino and appreciate all your time, thank you.
So much. All right.
Mayor, I thought we had a hand up.
I'm sorry, did you have some question?
I I noticed someone's hand is up.
Okay, so so now is the oral communication time, this is matters that are not on the agenda. And I understand, and does any member of council have any matters to discuss at this time? Or matters are not in the agenda, I think we could probably wait later. But this is probably more for individuals that are addressing us, so please go ahead. Attendees, if you can see the first hand is Mr. Callie Gordino? Mr. Gordino, if you could, thank you for joining us, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm a proud resident of Montessorino and delighted to join you virtually this evening. In addition to being a Montessorino resident, I'm an employee, executive vice president for Bloom Energy, a clean resilient energy company founded right here in Silicon Valley with nearly eight hundred local employees and currently hiring for more than three hundred additional advanced manufacturing careers. Over the past two years, we've all learned more than ever the vital role of our frontline hospital and healthcare workers, all putting our health before their own through the COVID nineteen crisis. In recognition of that selfless work, Bloom Energy hosted last summer our inaugural Stars and Strides Community Run and raised more than a quarter of a million dollars to benefit the Valley Medical Center Foundation and the one million-plus residents in our community that they serve annually. I'm here tonight to invite you to come and build on that success on Independence Day weekend, Saturday morning, July second, for our second annual Stars and Strides Community Run to support and celebrate those frontline hospital workers and the patients they serve. Our ambitious goals for our second annual Stars and Strides Community Run will be much more attainable with each of our participation. First, our financial goal is to raise and donate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the V M C Foundation. And we know that you're all used to running for office. We're hoping that you'll now join us in running for our community and for this great charity. Second, our participation goal is twenty-five hundred paid participants in our Armature Systems ten K run, our Silicon Valley Bank five K run, or our H P Kids Fun Run. And then third, our volunteer goal, four hundred caring volunteers to make sure we all have a fun, safe and healthy experience. Our Bloom Energy Stars and Strides Community Run starts and ends at the beautiful Discovery Meadow in downtown San Jose. And if you're thinking, Carl, I'm traveling for the Fourth of July weekend, hey, here's our no excuses opportunity, thanks to Bank of America and our Step Up in Spirit Virtual Run or Walk. So to further ensure the health and safety of our participants and volunteers, we've been coordinating with our county health professionals for months now to make sure that we can do this outdoors in a fun, safe and healthy way and have received their green light. So three quick requests to them, please consider. Please consider registering for yourself and your family, starsandstridesrun.com. Second, please consider reaching out to your own extensive databases of community members to encourage them to join you. And then third, we'd be honored to work with your professional staff to get out the word more broadly. I want to thank you all for your service to our community and the city in which Leslie and I and our kids live in. And hope to see you on Fourth of July weekend on Saturday, July second. You're on mute, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Guardino. I know I ran for your run last time and I predicted that's going to be the biggest run in this county. So it looks like you're working on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Let's go to the next one. And I guess we have a three minute time limit, but I didn't see a timer anywhere. Is there is there any we can put a timer up?
Yeah, sorry about that. Let me share that.
Wonderful. All right. So let's get the next gentleman on. Who's the attendee list, if you can? Is Mr. Garda Lever, Lever, I hope I'm saying it right. He's been patiently waiting since our start. Please go ahead, Mr. Lever.
Yeah, that's that's correct. Yeah, first, I'm glad that you're supporting West Valley. It's a great organization. Also, the various endeavors by Mr. Guardino. So I'm here because clarify a few things about emergency. The EOC Emergency Operations Center that they saw mentioned in a press article in the justification for the remodeling of the next building. I'm not sure if you understand that we don't have a, we're not isolated. We have a joint. Emergency program together with the fire department, police department and the city town of Los Gatos. And I encourage you to read it because once you read it, you realize how misguided it is to mention EOC. In the press especially, but also in the other document. The the plan calls for a unified command center and there's very good reason for that. It's longer than many several years ago, you have a paper copy that the city has it and then. I scan it and you can also have a PDF now. And if you mention the EOC, well, you did mention and then. Both the the police and the certain leadership were very concerned. Because it's it's either it either means that you know nothing about what the plans are, which is very easy to resolve. You just need to read the plan. Or that you're, you know, looking for an unnecessary fight or to withdraw from the 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 joint plan. That we have with the other groups. So. My ask is for you to please get familiarized with the emergency operation plans of our city. And to please contact the press or whoever you talked to before and tell them that you didn't mean to really. Move the EOC to Montessorino or to withdraw from that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And just we appreciate your input on that. Next is Ms. Nick on the line. Is that, please go ahead.
You hear me?
Yes, yes, this is.
Yeah, this is Philip. I'm using my wife's computer. Um, hey, I almost feel bad after hearing the presentation by West Valley. It was excellent. But I think the one thing we got to remember is we live in a in a bubble. And I want to talk a little bit about construction and I know that's kind of on the opposite end of the spectrum from what we just heard. My name is Phil Levine, one five eight one three Poppy Lane. I'm here to give you an update on our neighborhood construction challenges. In the last year, we've been surrounded by four major projects. One opposite us is completed, one Los Gatos based pool behind us. And two next to our property, one of which which also has a pool in it. And here we are worrying about water for poor people. But anyway. We're not looking for customer service sympathy, but some resolutions on some outstanding issues, which I think will benefit the whole city. On four twenty two, I noticed that the neighbor at one five eight two one Poppy Lane was adding wall to a surrounding chimney. This was not on the plans. I promptly notified Steve Leonardis and put what Ali on copy. On four twenty three, we got an email from Ali's day following, God bless him, saying that he would be out there on Monday AM. On Monday AM. It appears Ali went up. My wife followed up a couple of days later and we didn't hear. She followed up and found out that the person either has to remove the wall or he or we has to go in front of the planning commission. I wanted an update on where we are on the timing. Since then, I sent approximately five more emails asking Steve Leonardis copying to council members. In addition to leaving two phone messages, in addition to going to the office twice. I finally got a message back to Steve on Friday after five o'clock saying that he'd set up a meeting for a phone call on Monday or Tuesday. It's Tuesday night. I haven't heard anything. I'm a persistent person that deals with the IRS. I don't go away lightly. I know I'm more persistent. So Phil, what do you want? Number one. A clear explanation on the next steps and schedule. Note, this is not only an issue of structural integrity, but one to proper processes and architectural aesthetics. These decisions are not to be made unilateral. Maybe it'll end up being okay, but I don't know that. Number two, I really question the responsibility of the licensed contractor. And I don't think as a city, we really hold a licensed contractor's feet to the fire. They seem to win after giving a smile and a sorry, no matter if the issue is corrected or not, for which he's paid. If it slips, he just smiles. There seems to be no negative, there seems to be positive reinforcement of negative action. Most professionals like myself or even with Sean Luthold. If we have an if we have a client that's coming to do something that's illegal or improper, we have to tell them no. It's an issue of ethics and professional responsibility. I don't see contractors in our town taking that and it will just do what the client asked for with no recall. Lastly, Liz Lawler was great enough a couple of months ago to ask for putting up holiday hour signs and also hour signs. That's been a couple of months. The issue around our house has been greatly improved, but I don't know why. It's still a great idea. It's still an issue around the city. I think this is an issue that still should be done. I have no idea why this is taking two to three months to implement. Thank you for your time and service. And I think if we ignore this, the issue with the contractors and neighbors are going to be continued. And I'd just like to emphasize, a person, especially a person with my persistence, shouldn't have to make five. Emails, two calls into the factory, into the office and also stop by twice.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. We appreciate your bringing it to our attention and I'm sure city manager. Will bring us up to date as to what's going on.
Well, well, I hope so. It's been a been a long time and a lot of effort on my part. Most people don't have that persistence. So thank you much.
Thank you, sir. All right. Do we have any other individuals attendees who would like to address on the oral communication part? We're still on that. If none, I guess we'll go to written communications. Are there any written communications?
None.
Okay, so we're off to the consent calendar. Does anyone have wish to put a pull anything for the consent calendar? During that, I just had one corrections to make on. I think it's the May third calendar, if I'm not mistaken. Where you review the April nineteen minutes or April nineteen minutes were reviewed. There was a disclosure made by Ms. Lawler that she had met with Mr. Schwartz and. Regarding their property development. And I believe I also made a disclosure that I had also met with Mr. Schwartz and the haze. If you can add that to the minutes.
These are for the minutes of April nineteen.
Yeah, I think so. April nineteen minutes, if I'm not mistaken. I don't have any other comments. Are there any other accounts, anybody? Other members of the public who have any comments on that? If not, we will go on to.
Yeah, you do have a hand.
Councilor Luthold has had now, or no, so. Sorry about that. I missed it. Go ahead.
If there's no one that wants to remove any items from the consent calendar, then. I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we'd ask the public if anybody had a comment on the consent calendar.
So it looks like we still have a hand raised. They haven't lowered it. Should I go ahead and allow them?
But I have a hand up for Ms. Nick again. I don't know if it's a, it's been up for a while or is that a new hat?
Hi, this is Susan.
Yes, Susan.
Hi, sorry, raised a hand a bit late. I just wanted to add on to what my husband Philip says.
Yeah, I I think at this time, the oral discussion part is gone. So we're.
You missed the hand.
Yeah, I missed the hand at that time. All right, my 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 bad. Please go ahead.
Sorry about that. Sorry. We'll live it slow. We're getting older. And so this is the add on and. As a resident of Montessorino for more than twenty five years. Customer service has always been touted to be the priority of every single year, every council member. And I don't mean to hub on it, but I think Phil is more patient than me to follow up so many times with the city manager. Even going in person to meet up with him and got turned away. This would not happen in a corporate world. Guys, you guys have to really think about what. What customer service is about. It's like, you know, we turn up so many times. And get the cold shoulder and the finger. I feel like we got a cold shoulder and a finger. And to me, this is not acceptable. So I put this to you guys to see what can be done to improve. Customer service. That's it.
Thank you so much. I apologize for not seeing your hand in time. So.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your bringing it up. All right. There was still oral communication. So the written communication I've already asked. I understand there are no written communications. And if that's correct, we'll go to the consent calendar. I guess we're already on the consent calendar. Do do does anybody else have any comments on the consent calendar? I'm sorry, Council Attorney Rudin, did you have some comments?
Yes, I believe that there was a motion made by council member Mecha Chuck and I just had a question. Council member Mecha Chuck, did your motion include the changes to the minutes as mentioned by the mayor?
Yes. My I make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the change to the minutes as requested by Mayor Elahi.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Councilor Luthold, the old call piece.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Lawler? Mayor Pretend, Mecha Chuck?
I.
And Mary Lawhe.
I. Thank you. And so we are next going to go to unfinished business. And the first one is the evaluated considering accept community grant application submittals. Is the staff report on that? Let's have that, please.
Thank you, Mayor Steve Leonardis, city manager, for you this evening for consideration. Prior to adopting our annual budget is our new policy to review. According to the adopted guidelines in twenty twenty, community grants opportunities for community based organizations. And included in the staff report is our guidelines as well as. We have a total of eight grant applicants this year and some recommendations by staff made. Who to award the grants to, which equate to the grant limit of twenty thousand dollars. I wanted to add on. That initially it was not known that West Valley Community Services had submitted an application. Therefore, in the original staff report, they were not included. However, we did attach their letter and if council wanted to consider awarding funds to West Valley Community Services. They of course can do so. We do have a recommendation which utilizes all twenty thousand dollars of our grant monies. According to what we have in our budget, but I do believe council has the authority to exceed that. Twenty thousand dollar number, should they choose to do so and issue additional grant funds. Should they find merit in the West Valley Community Services application? And or as an alternative, council could instruct staff to bring back. Perhaps at our next council meeting, an opportunity to review a special grant request for West Valley Community Services. That concludes my report and I am open for questions.
What what's the amount of the grant that the West Valley Community Services is applied for?
They had asked for the maximum grant amount, which is five thousand dollars.
Thank you. I have a conflict. I think I at least to K Cat, my son is on the board of K Cat. So if you can consider all the other grants and not consider K Cat at this time, and then I'll recuse myself. When the consideration for that grant comes up. Is is that appropriate, Attorney Rudin?
Yes, that is appropriate. I would actually recommend that we segment the decision slightly differently. And that we consider the K Cat grant first. That you state your recusal on the record and then turn off your camera and turn over the meeting to. Mayor Pro Tem Mecha Chuck for the conduct of that discussion. And then, once that discussion is complete. That the entire council can consider the remainder of the grants and then vote to approve all of the grants that you would like to approve together.
Thank you, sir. With that recommendation, I will recuse myself and. We're pro tem execute if you can take over, discuss K Cat and then I can get back into it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm looking at. The the list that the staff put together and just so that we can frame it before we get into K Cat. We've got art docents for four thousand. Los Gatos Music and Arts for five thousand. AWO for twenty five hundred. Los Gatos Community Concert Association for two thousand. K Cat, which is what we're going to discuss for five thousand. Nova Solish Chamber Orchestra for five thousand. And Sustainable Ways, which is Los Gatos Music in the Park for thirty five hundred. And. Mr. Leon Artis. Did you total that up? What is our grand total? Four and five are nine, eleven, sixteen.
Twenty seven thousand dollars for all of those mentioned original grant requests.
And then we've also got on top of that twenty seven, we've got a request of five. For.
That is correct.
Oh, so we've got a total of thirty two.
That is correct. And that is about in line with the grant requests we received last year, which were a total of about thirty three thousand.
Thirty three thousand, okay.
Yeah, last year, I believe we did grant West Valley Community Services. Monies outside of the normal grants process as a special grant. I'd have to double check the notes.
Okay. And can you give us the comparable numbers from last year?
Well, certainly, I would say that. Our docents, their request is, I'll just go down the list.
Sure.
Art Docents, Los Gatos Music and Arts, K Cat, Community Concert Association. As well as Sustainable Ways is Los Gatos Music in the Park. All of their requests are in line with what was requested last year. We have a couple of new requests this year, AW, a new requesters, AWO and the Nova Solisti Chamber Orchestra. Those are both new requests or new applicants.
Okay, and how much did K Cat out? They asked for five thousand last year and they're asking for five thousand this year. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how much did we award them last year?
We awarded them five thousand last year.
And was that the. Sereno specific. Work that they were doing on the history?
No, we actually had a separate agreement for K Cat on the Montessorino Living History Project, which totaled ten thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that sets the the landscape for everyone and what we're. Talking about now is is the K Cat grant request of five thousand. And forgive me, Mr. Leon Artis, did you did you separate out what you would recommend we do if we were limited to twenty thousand?
Yes, that is under the recommendations paragraph near the top of the. Yes, that is under the recommendations paragraph near the top of the staff report.
Okay, so our docents, four thousand. Uh, K Cat, you're saying go with the maximum five thousand?
Yes.
All right, uh, do we have discussion by council on this? Is it?
There are two. We have a council member Lawler and council member Turner with their hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I can't see that from my, from my screen right now. Uh, so if, if you could manage that for me, please, I would appreciate it. Go ahead. Um, I'm sorry, who is first, the first hand?
I'm sorry?
I was first.
Okay, Councilmember Turner.
Yes, uh, what, what I would like to suggest is that we stay in the boundaries of our budget at this time. Uh, we know that. This year is going to be a very difficult year for the economy. And so I would suggest that we stay within the twenty thousand. And then if we have money towards the end of the year, we, we can. Uh, give the money towards, uh, the rest of, of what they were asking for. Thank you.
If I could, uh, just clarify your request, so. We've got a recommendation of how, uh, Mister Leon Artis would distribute the twenty thousand. And we've got the other requests from West Valley Community Services of five thousand. So would you, are you recommending that we only distribute? Twenty thousand so that we would have to. Uh, make room in that twenty thousand for the whatever we decide to give to West Valley Community Services? If you could just clarify that for us, please?
Yes, that, that's what I'm suggesting, that we do not go over our budget at this time.
Okay. And then, uh, Councilmember Lawler had her hand raised. Is that correct?
Yes, I, yes, I do. Um, thank you. So historically, we've given K Cat five thousands. So that's why we have to be careful about how much we give because we set. A bar for these, these, these organizations to come back at us, you know, every year. We have historically given K Cat five thousand, so that's what's on the table right now. So I think we should go ahead and, and approve that because that's what we've historically given them. So giving them anything less than that would be. I think inappropriate. They are a very, uh, well worth it organization in our community. Thanks.
So you're putting forth a recommendation of five thousand for K Cat?
Yes, um, because we have historically given them five thousand every year. So there's a difference between what they're at, all of these other, uh, all of these other organizations are asking. They're asking for what they want, but we haven't given. All of these organizations, the amount that they've actually asked, with the exception of K Cats and, uh, West Valley. Community Services, I think a lot of these other ones. Steve, if, if you could look it up, what, what we gave art docents in the past? What did we give Los Gatos Music and Arts in the past? Uh, what did we give the Community Concert Association? I don't recall this one. Um, and then the two new ones, I, I'm not sure they're really applicable. And Sustainable Ways, I don't, I'm not sure, did we give them thirty five hundred last time? So it would have to be helpful if we could. Find out what we actually didn't give them last year as opposed to what they asked for last year.
Uh, Council, this is City Clerk Michelle Wright, Michelle Esteville. Give me one second. I did have last year's staff report up. Um, I'll get you those numbers shortly.
Great, thanks.
And, um, to further, um. Answer Councilmember Lawler's point, if I may, Mayor Pretend. Last year, council did have some deliberations about. Los Gatos Music and Arts, which is essentially what's called Jazz on the Plaz. Being that there was sort of a virtual season. And it previously council, I believe, gave them the full five thousand. Last year, I think. Council deliberated and gave less than five thousand because. It was a virtual season format, but this year it's again back to live concerts. Um, and then the one called Sustainable Ways, I think this year the request. Is less than what they had asked for in the past. Um, I think. I don't, I'm not sure we awarded them again last year. They didn't have any live concerts, music in the park, so, um. This year they're going back to live concerts. And I think this thirty five hundred dollar request for Sustainable Ways. Represents one week where Montessorino is a sponsor. And, uh, we would have a booth and all those kinds of things like we had done in the past as well.
Okay, uh, I do have the numbers from last year. Last year, we gave art docents of Los Gatos. Two thousand dollars. K Cat, five thousand dollars. The Los Gatos Kiwanis, Kiwanis Club, two thousand dollars. Los Gatos Music and Arts, three thousand dollars. The Veterans Memorial and Support Foundation of Los Gatos, three thousand dollars. And West Valley Community Services, five thousand dollars.
Great, thank you. That helps.
Uh, do we have any comments from other council members on the K Cat? Request and the recommendation of five thousand dollars?
Uh, Councilmember Luthold does have his hand raised, Mayor Pretend.
Thank you. Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Luthold.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I wanted to second what, um, Councilmember Lawler said about K Cat specifically. Um, we, uh, not only are they, they a valuable member of the community. Uh, providing valuable services, working with the kids at the school as well. Um, but, but we have always supported them at this level. I don't think it's time to go backwards. I know we have other things that we want to, to do. Um, and we want to be generous at the same time. Um, Councilmember Turner's comments are, are also well taken about, um, sticking within our budgets. Uh, but I am for, um, the five thousand for K Cat. And then working through the rest of these numbers. And, um, I'm also for trying to keep to this budget for now. But, um, coming back as we build, uh, through the budget session. Look at how we've done this year and what we're doing going into next year. And, um, and then hopefully having the ability to expand a little bit beyond. Uh, because we are coming back on supporting the arts, um, with, uh, the, the concert series, uh, in person. And I think we, we do want to continue to support West Valley. So I think my view is that we may want to pull West Valley out. And look at them as we look at our budget as we go into the end of this year and, and next year. And see whether we can justify going over these, what I would consider more cultural types of activities. Uh, that we're supporting here. So I'm for the K Cat and then, um, be happy to talk through the rest of these once we get on that track.
Okay, so, uh, any other comments by council members? No?
There are no raised hands.
What I'd like to do then is I'm hearing support for, from two council members for five thousand dollars for K Cat. And I would concur with that. Do we want to have a vote on it or do we want?
We, we, we have public comment that. Yeah.
And, and Council, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Mecha Chuck, I would recommend we take public comments specifically on the issue of the K Cat Grant. Uh, there should be a separate public comment, uh, period available for all the other grants. So I would, I would recommend you take public comments specifically for anyone wanting to comment on the K Cat Grant.
Okay, I would like to open it up for public comment on the K Cat Grant specifically, not other grants. Do we have any hands raised?
Yes, we do. Melissa Torrid.
Go ahead, please. You've got three minutes.
Melissa, you could speak. You're on mute.
Hello, Melissa.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Hi, everybody. So I just wanted to. Um, thank you so much for the grant at the same level as last year. It really, really, really helped us. Start our radio program, especially for the youth. Um, we're serving them in, in extraordinary way. Um, dealing with mental health and these youth that have come off of. Um, you know, alone all year, the past few years. They're just coming in and doing all these shows and programs and they put on their headsets. And they just talk and talk and talk, and it's really been. An amazing, amazing program. Thanks to you, because you funded the inaugural year of our radio station. We're also serving a diverse community. We have shows for, um, black musicians and. Um, DEI programs. So again, that's because of you. So I really appreciate your. Giving us the same level this year so we can continue all this good work that we're doing. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other hands raised?
No, there aren't any hands raised.
I will close the public comment and on this item. And I will say that, uh, I believe Councilmember Lawler and I were at the turnaround scholarships. And we heard, uh, that. That our youth went through some very difficult times with COVID, so. It's great to see, uh, K Cat, uh, helping pull everyone through. Um, so now. Would it be appropriate to have a roll call vote on the five thousand dollars for K Cat? City Attorney Rudin?
Yes, it would. I think we still need a motion in a second.
Oh, okay. Do we have a motion?
I will make the motion to, uh, give K Cat five thousand dollars.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion second. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Luthold?
Yes.
And Mayor Pretend, Mecha Chuck?
I.
Thank you.
Motion carries. And I'd like to invite, uh, Mayor. Alahi back to the meeting, to chair the meeting.
Thank you. Very well done, Mayor Pretend, Mecha. Uh, all right, so now we have the rest of the grants and, uh, of course I was sitting and listening to the discussion. I could not participate, but. I think listening is allowed, so. Uh, it was a fairly active discussion. Uh, but the question is to, do we need to keep it at twenty thousand? A suggestion of West Valley being considered separately. I think we did that last year also. Maybe a good one, but anyway, let's, let's start that discussion on the rest of the people that are there. Uh, Councilmember Lawler, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, with respect to West Valley Community Services, they are a five oh one C three, and this is why we have a grants program. And I, I think that, you know, we had gone outside of the realm because of COVID. But we have always given to them through our grant program. So I would suggest keeping it that way and then having a conversation later if we felt we needed to. And I would recommend. If we followed the guidelines from what we gave last year, we can give West Valley five thousand, K Cat five thousand. Art Docents two thousand, Los Gatos Music and Arts three thousand, and right there, that fifteen thousand, and we still have five thousand. To split between Nova Solisti, the, the other three or other four. Um, I do have concerns about two of them, though. The Nova Solisti Chamber Orchestra. Does not provide services for free. You have to purchase tickets, and I think that that probably isn't. Admissible in our, in our grant making. According to our rules. Could you verify that, um, Mister Leon Artis?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Lawler. I missed the last part of what you said. About.
When I looked at Nova Solisti Chamber Orchestra. You actually have to purchase tickets to attend their events. So they are providing free services to community members.
I did not, I did not see that in the initial review, so I, that is a, um. A reason not to include them according to our guidelines. The objective is to provide services to the community on behalf of charity.
Right, so we, I might make a suggestion that we remove that one at this time. And then the other one that wasn't, that wasn't part of your recommendation was the AWO one. And I feel that that one, I, I don't think that it's appropriate simply because it seems more like it's a school based thing. Um, versus, um, under our purview. Um, so that said, if we, that leaves us with Sustainable Ways at thirty five hundred, which still leaves us. Uh, what is that, fifteen, eighteen fifty and under budget? So that would be my suggestion.
Great, anybody else, uh, want to get participated in the discussion? Well, also Turner, I don't know if you had your hand up or not.
For. I, yes, I do. And, and I agree with, uh, Councilmember Lawler. Uh, I like being under budget and within the budget rather than, uh, spending more money at this time. Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, I, I need to make a pitch for AWO. It is helping Los Gatos, uh, schools and, and playing a role in Montessorino. Uh, it's a, it's also help, helping the diverse minority communities, plays a heavy role in the African American community. And, uh, I think they were asked for about twenty five hundred. We should probably at least provide about a thousand dollars for them. I had the chance to listen to the founder at a rotary function. And, uh, there's a lot of work that's being done that's, uh, helping our communities also. So they're, you know, they're participating in items that need to be addressed. Uh, and basically participating in the, with the minority communities. So I think we need to. I'd request that, uh, please a thousand dollars to consider for them.
We're at eighteen thousand five hundred. And if we gave them fifteen hundred, then that would bring us to twenty thousand. Is that correct?
That sounds like that would add up. So, so going back on everybody that we've talked about, we've got K Cat for five thousand. We've got, uh, West Valley for five thousand. And. And AWO for fifteen hundred. And then who else was in the mix? Um, Councilmember Lawler, I think you were keeping track.
Uh, let's see, it was K Cat for five, W, uh, West Valley for five, Art Docents for two. Los Gatos Music and Arts for three. Los Gatos Community Concert Association for one. So that puts us at what, uh, seventeen, sixteen? And then Sustainable Ways. For thirty five hundreds, that puts us at. But that puts us at nineteen five, so we don't have, um, we have five hundred, I'm sorry. What if we give Sustainable Ways last year? Do you recall?
We, we didn't give them anything last year.
Oh, oh, we didn't?
No.
Okay, okay. What's music in the park? Oh, okay, that's right. We gave them less. Okay. Um, so that gives five hundred. I'm sorry, I guess I, I didn't do my math right.
You have music in the, music and arts, we gave, um, three thousand last year.
We gave music in the park three thousand last year?
Well, Los Gatos Music and Arts, is that?
That's the same thing.
Same thing, okay.
Okay, so we could, we could give them three thousand and make more space. My, my question about AWO is this, um. In our policy, we're supposed to, they're supposed to provide. Services or events free to the public, and I'm not clear on what they do. I know they want to have this program called. What is it? Stories in Schools, and that's why I sort of thought this might be under the purview of the school district. Are, are, are residents getting anything in return for the, I mean, in terms of. Events free to the public? I'm not, I'm not clear. I couldn't quite understand. You know, other than. Then an organized, um. Kind of walk downtown. I don't see what. What there is. I'm just, I just, just clarify that for me, and then otherwise, you know, then we can figure it out.
Yeah, I, I think they're encouraged. Yeah, they're encouraging students basically to participate. And also bring in their diversity and culture into the schools and, uh, other issues. I wish she was here herself and, uh, we'll talk about it. So I'm, um.
Okay, so then that, what if we gave Sustainable Ways three thousand? That's a thousand left.
Yeah, I think that'd be a start. I think that would, that'd be a good start.
Good. Good.
And then they can move from there. So.
But we hit 20,000, so that would be our.
Mr. Artis, can, can you make sure that we have all the right numbers for the right organizations, if you don't mind?
Well, if we can. I have K Cat 5,000, West Valley, Community Services 5,000, A W O. We had 1,500, Art Docents 2,000. The Sustainable Ways was 3,000. And the Los Gatos Concert, Community Concerts was 1,000. Is that correct?
No.
Councilmember Law.
Do you mind going through it one more time? I'll open up an Excel spreadsheet and see how that.
Let's do that. K Cat for five.
West Valley Community Services for 5,000, A W O, 1,500. Art Docents 2,000, Los Gatos Community Concerts Association 1,000.
Slow down a little bit, I'm trying to do it as quickly. So, but A W O for 15, that Art Docent was how much?
No, I think A W O was, I'm sorry, I think A W O was for 1,000, right? Because.
Right, it should be 1,000, so how much is Art Docent?
1,000. Art Docents 2,000, Los Gatos Community Concerts was 1,000. We had Sustainable Ways, which is Music in the Park, was 3,000. And the Los Gatos Music and Arts was 3,000.
Okay, so there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them. And if you total them on my spreadsheet, it comes to 20,000.
Yep.
All right. Sounds good. So can we have a motion to?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
And Mayor, can we, I would recommend we take public comment on all of the remaining grants.
Absolutely. Could we have, any member of the public wish to address council on that? And these, I see one hand, I believe it's raised. So, Ms. Ning, did you have a comment?
Yeah, this is Phil. I'm still here, you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, sorry about you guys. Hey, just a quick comment. There's a lot of hand wringing here about how horrible things are. The budget has a, the state budget's huge. I do tax returns. There's a lot of people that made a lot of money. I've got four construction sites around me, which I complained about. It's not that bad here. I would just like to encourage you, I'm all for fiscal responsibility and meeting budget, but. The people on the lower end of the spectrum are hit by inflation a lot more than the average Montesereno resident. And I, I just wanted to encourage you to err on the side of being generous, especially with someone like West Valley. Because that food counts. They can't sit around and, you know, wait. And the people that need that food are gonna get, are gonna get hit by inflation a lot. Worse than people putting in pools and putting up multimillion dollar houses. So I just want to encourage you to err on the side of being generous. And we can't hold back on money when so many other people need it, when there's a lot of money around here, guys. We're not, we're not in a poor area. And I, I appreciate your generosity and thank you very much for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing that and it's really. Good motivation for us all. Appreciate that, Bob. All right, any other public comments? If not, we'll bring you back to council for comments and then maybe a motion.
Mayor, would you have one more hand?
We do have another hand from Sujatha. Sujatha, if you'd like to go ahead and address this, please.
Yes, thank you so much, Sujatha Venkateshaman for West Valley Community Services Associate Executive Director. We really appreciate, I was hearing this discussion, these are difficult conversations to have, but thank you for supporting West Valley Community Services. We really appreciate this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you and thank you for all that you're doing. Keep it going. What we do is about the least that anybody could do. Mayor Pachamacan, let me, let me just finish. Is there anybody else in the member of public with, has any other comment? If not, we'll bring it back to council, Mayor Maccheck.
Yes, what I'd like to say is we can distribute, and maybe, I'm not sure if I heard it correctly, but. Where, our policy limits us to $5,000 per organization. Is that correct, Mr. Leon Artis?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we've got the opportunity to distribute $20,000, which is our budget. As of right now, and we're giving the maximum of $5,000 to West Valley Community Services. And then I believe I heard. Councilmember Turner saying that later in the year, as we start to know our numbers. Perhaps there will be an opportunity to make additional. Donate, an additional donation to West Valley Community Services. Did I hear that correctly and could we do that if we are looking better? In our mid-year budget update?
Well, certainly, I will just. You know, expand on what you just mentioned. In fiscal year 2021. Montesereno City Council, because of the pandemic and the needs of West Valley Community Services. Had on more than one occasion opted to grant funds to West Valley Community Services. As a matter of fact, I think prior to fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. Montesereno had never contributed funds to West Valley Community Services, to my knowledge, even though they had been servicing our community for years. So we established a partnership with them and it was also the pandemic. So. I believe in that year or over the course of 12 months. Montesereno on two or three occasions opted to give West Valley Community Services $5,000 at a time for a total of about $15,000. Two of them were special grants for the pandemic and I believe one of them was a community grant last year at this time. So. If council wanted to later on in the year. When we have more of a, we see how the economics are playing out. They certainly would have that opportunity to request. Special grant on the agenda as they did in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Leon Artis. I would like to make the motion to distribute $20,000. As set forth previously.
I'll second that.
I'll proceed with the roll call. Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Lufo?
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Pachamacan?
I.
And Mayor Alahi?
Hi, thank you. Okay, so there was. Then some, we can go on to the next agenda item. Can we read out the next agenda item?
Oh, oh, just, just a moment. Since we had previously included $5,000 for K Cat, really. We're just approving the other 15,000, so we should, in that, we shouldn't have K Cat because they were already in a. Predecessor motion. Is that correct, Attorney Rudin?
Yes, but I don't think it substantially makes a difference. You know, the council already made a final decision, so you're just restating what that was.
Okay, thank you.
Clarify, that clarifies it. So the next item was to confirm the 2022 Montesereno Social Justice Award. Winner selected by the Montesereno Youth Commission. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Steve Leon Artis reporting on. The Youth Commission's selection of this year's Social Justice Award nominee and winner. And I wanted to give a little background, back during the summer of 2020. There was civil unrest in the United States. And council at the time saw merit and an idea to bring an ongoing message for social change. That can be de- decided. By our Youth Commission on an annual basis through what's called the Social, Montesereno Social Justice Award. And this keeps an ongoing message. As well a, at the high schools, local high schools. The students submit resumes and or artwork telling about their. Experiences with social justice and what they've done to make a difference in our community. And it is open to our community and all the high schools in the surrounding communities. This year, we received a couple. Applications for the award and the Youth Commission chose the one in the staff report. Which was submitted by Maya Serguev. And the application is, is included in the staff report with the applicant's essay. And it is staff's recommendation that the council recognize. The selection made by the Youth Commission and that the award be made. On, onto the charity chosen by Ms. Serguev, which is the. Nextdoor Solutions for Domestic Violence, a good local charity. And again, they are a nonprofit organization. The $1,000 goes. To the charity directly and not to the individual, although the individual is recognized as the winner of the award. So that's how the program works. I'm here to answer questions. About that. Should council have any?
Thank you, sir. Any questions for staff from council? None, we'll go to the public. Any questions from public for the staff on the community award? No, no comment, no, no, no questions, no comments. And so we're back to council for comments. If anybody wishes to comment on this particular item. Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead. Thank you.
Well, the Youth Commission worked hard deliberating last week on who to decide, so I am going to make a motion that the council confirmed the selection. Of the 2022 Montesereno Social Justice Award winner. And, and again, her name is. It's Maya Serguev. And the award will go to Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Pachamacan, Maccheck. And I'll concur, I think it's a great, great thing that we're doing this and hopefully going forward, we'll have more people involved with. Applying for the award. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Pachamacan?
I.
And Mayor Alahi?
I.
Thank you. The next item, which is a study session. For fiscal year 2022, 23 proposed budget. There's a recommendation of staff and there's a staff report, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Alahi. This is Reynolds Samranas, Finance Officer. If I may, share my screen. Loisee?
You should be able to, go ahead.
Make sure I pick the right one here.
There we go.
Can everyone see my screen? Okay, I'm pleased to report that on this proposed FY 2023 budget. If you look at the third column, total revenues, I'm projecting 5.2 million versus 5 million flat. On the mid-year budget, that's about a 100 or 100,000 higher than. The mid-year budget or 2.5% higher. In looking at the details, property tax. That's going up slightly by 1.6%. And that number comes from the assessor's report. That they produce or they announce and it shows the specific details of what they're projecting. Next year's tax out, property tax allocations will be. But specifically within that category, see if I can read my notes here. Within that, we're projecting higher $50,000 higher property tax. But lower police special tax assessment by 23 and that results in that net 37 increase. The next major item is license, license and permits. I'm projecting that to be higher because, simply because the run rate for permit activity has been robust throughout the year. So I'm, that estimate is based on the. Mid-year budget run rate that we were seeing. From the permits being processed. Skipping down to other revenues, that $357,000 less money. That's due to a reallocation of how I reported this figure. It actually got shifted down to the sales tax line item because that's where I reflected all the. COVID-19 CARES Act federal money that we're projected to receive. So the 128,000 that you see there. Let's see, reflects. A couple of grants. One is the housing element leap grant for 65,000. And another housing element grant called the REAP grant for 20,000. And then followed by 18,000 related to road impact fees. Skipping down to gas tax, I'm projecting that to be higher simply because there's. More. Traffic on the roads and, and so as a result, that's based on the current run rates that I'm seeing with respect to the gas tax. The real property tax. That actually, there's actually opportunity there with respect to. That figure, but the 145,000 reflects the, let's see. Reflect, reflects lower real property transfer tax. The sales activity for homes sold in Montesereno has been robust. So I, I took a conservative stance, given that the increase in mortgage rates. Would perhaps slow down that activity, but, but so there's opportunity for. That number being higher. The other aspect of that $134,000 decrease is. We had a SB2 grant last year that we're no longer have in fiscal 2023. And then finally, the sales tax, the 909 represents the various CARES Act slash COVID-19. Relief funds that we're expecting. Next fiscal year, giving us a total of 5.2 million in total revenues.
Can I just ask you a question here?
Sure.
Yeah, I'm wondering why are you adding those in the sales tax line rather than showing them as a separate grant?
That's what I did last year when we received the COVID-19 grant, the 4, the 410.
Okay, yes.
So, I was trying, I was trying to be more consistent in how I recognize it in the mid-year budget.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, but I think maybe appropriate to this grant separately because it already fit in under that original.
Okay.
Because that, that way you can tell, okay, that's what fell off and.
Yeah.
Okay, please keep going. Any, anybody else have any questions at this time? If not, please keep going.
Okay, so on the expenditure side, let's go into the summary. On the expenditure side, on the personnel. That reflects current headcount that we have currently. And it also reflects a 2% increase in salaries based on the MOU. And then we're adding a proposed building inspector slash code enforcement staff person. Which, which I estimate to be 168,000 increase in that $265,000. Increase in that. In that personnel account. Let's see. Law enforcement, that's pretty much flat to last year. I think I projected the 2.5% increase. That difference of the 1.2 reflects the. The cops grant that gets, that's a pass through. In our, in our agency, so. So I think we received 150,000 last year. We always projected, we always forecast 100,000. And then whatever is more that we get, it just falls through, it just flows through our, our numbers. Construction, again, that's another item where I reclassified a grant that was slated for the building of the annex building. I actually moved that figure down to building maintenance. So that's reflected down there. General government. I converted the, I guess it's lower because I converted the what we'd normally charge for the consultants to perform the code enforcement as well as building inspections as consultants. I moved that light item to personnel. So thus, the the, that conversion reduces government or consulting expenses by about 100,000. And and this is offset by a GIS mapping consultant higher by 15,000. See, maintenance, that's where we put a lot of the capital improvement projects. So what's included there is pavement management program of 310,000. The neighborhood improvement project for on Davies, on Dave's 27,000 and Highway nine improvement project of 600,000. Next major light item administration. We converted the building inspector CSG consultant to a staff employee. That was the other 56,000 was offset by a development and maintenance of a permit module, which increased by 50,000. Next item, city attorney. I left the retainer, I think I grew the retainer for the city attorney by 2.5%. And then I just simply did a run rate for the litigation related items for Shakar Paget Greenwood cases, which accounted for the balance. So I actually forecast that to be slightly lower. Building maintenance. This includes the city hall parking lot project retrofit 125,000. The annex building project 600,000 and miscellaneous repairs of 25,000. Equipment improvement, it's slower. Last year, we purchased some computers and laptops, so I don't expect that expense this year. And then finally, engineering. It's lower because of the West Valley Clean Water Administration, admission administration assessment fee, it's being lowered to 12,000. So that gives us a total of 5.6 million of total expected expenditures, meaning we'll have to draw down from our reserves about 500,000. And so following that, I have a matrix. Okay.
There's, there's some grand money that's coming in from Silicon Valley Clean Energy for the NXC and the buildings. Is that shown somewhere or are you just kind of?
Yeah.
Comes in.
Yeah, so the money that we're projecting is included in, let's see, the revenue line here. This 909. That's, you know, maybe I should relabel the sales tax, but I included it in this figure here.
All right, yeah, that would be helpful. Council member, Lutol is a question, please go ahead.
Yeah, two questions, actually. One is on, you said roughly $900,000 in in various grants COVID relief related. You use the word estimated, yet you've put it in there on the income columns. Is that estimated and might or might not happen? Or is that number guaranteed and going to happen? Because if it's our desires and our dreams and our hopes, that punches a huge hole in the budget, maybe $900,000 hole in the budget. If that's simply something that has been suggested or or even promised, but not really promised. So could you talk about the status of that 900,000? And then I'll go ahead and pose my other issue. And that is on the expenses side, on the employees. You said per the MOU, you've budgeted for the 2% increase on the MOU. Is that correct? I vaguely remember that there is a CPI related number in the MOU. So if there is, that needs to be looked at and we need to consider the effect of that. If there isn't a CPI related number in the MOU, that's going to create an employee retention problem for us because 2% is nowhere near inflation. So we need to address that both on the contract basis of what is in the contract and what we're going to do if it isn't in the contract as we look at the budget. And we can come back and talk about that more, but if you could address those issues, I appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, again, when I looked at the MOU, I saw the 2% increase, whether it's CPI. Yeah, I'll just have to confirm that from the MOU. Regarding the
Yeah, sorry, sorry to interrupt. I thought I remembered when when negotiating, looking at the MOU that there was something about Bay Area and cities and so on and so forth. And that there was an actual reference to an actual CPI based adjustment. So but let's check that or maybe City Attorney Rudin could pull up the MOU while we're here and take a quick look and see if there's something in there that I'm confusing myself about.
I can pull it up right here.
Councilor, you told you're on mute.
Oh, thank you. So, yeah, so we could do that one first if the MOU is handy. Otherwise, we can circle back to that and you can comment on the COVID relief numbers and how real those are.
So on the COVID relief, the 410 is certain. We got that in play to come in. The balance, it's still pending. So so that's, that's where we stand on that.
So that's roughly 500 of the 900 then that's still pending?
Yes.
Okay, and so my suggestion as we go forward would be that we keep an eye on our projects so that we maintain flexibility so that we don't have a $500,000 hole. But if we have a pavement improvement or some other project, we may want to take a look at that. I'm sure Ms. Turner will be able to help us watch. Okay, that was a
See.
You're muted again.
Sorry, sorry, we can come back to the MOU whenever that's convenient.
Okay, so let's see what council member Turner has a question.
I, yes, I do. This one is, let me take a step back. Mr. Samoranas, were you at our our goal setting session, our strategic goal setting session?
Uh, yes, I was, Councilmember Turner.
Okay, there were two projects that are critical to the well-being and the safety of our residents. And and I'm not sure it's in here. One is, I asked for $12,500 for an NICP to be installed, and the other one is $5,000 to renew CClick Fix. Now, are those in here?
Those are in there. That would be considered under the software, software budget.
After a budget. Well, it's, it's it's not software, though. So can you sure that that it's categorized properly? NICP is a shed outside city hall. And it's used for cert people in case of fire or an emergency.
That could be categorized under miscellaneous unidentified.
We have to put it in. I would request that you put it in as an NICP. And also, you know, as, as Michelle is working on CClick Fix, we need to make sure that for the coming year that she has the budget to implement it.
Uh, yes, that is in the budget. I remember specifically putting that in.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Turner?
No, thank you.
May Protem Megachek, please.
Yes. First of all, this is a working session, so we're having discussions on this so that we're giving direction to our finance director. Is that correct? Do I understand this correctly?
Yes, that's the impression I get. This is, this is the first draft of what we propose based on input from staff.
Okay. Understood. I noticed in here there's something on the West Valley Clean Water. It's under engineering. And I just wanted to make sure that you're coordinating with West Valley Clean Water on what to include because there's some significant changes, I believe, coming up that are, that are going to affect things. So that, so we don't have to go into it now, but I just want to make sure that you're coordinating with West Valley Clean Water JPA on that.
Is that council member Megachek, was that related to an assessment?
Their their budget works in a, in a different sort of manner, but I believe that they charge each municipality some fees. So.
Yeah, because I think that's
My, my only point is if you would just make sure that you coordinate with them so that you're on the same page, then that would be good. I just don't want there to be a gotcha in there in the future. That's all.
Okay.
And then the other item that we're taught, we were talking about is the road impact fees with West Valley solid waste and and there may be a requirement with something in the budget for that at some point. But I, as I'm thinking about it, I think it's, it's not in 2023. It could be in, sorry, 22, 23, it could be 23, 24. So I'm getting ahead of myself. So, okay, thank you.
Okay. So then what I wanted to show is summary of the
Summer, Attorney Rudin had his hand up, so if you can let him answer in your new, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, council member. I'm just looking at the MOU in order to answer Councilmember Luthold's question. The current MOU goes through the end of fiscal year 2023, terminating in June 2023. It provides the following salary increases for the members of the bargaining unit. 3% salary increase and a one-time bonus of 3% in July 2020. In July 2021, it provides for one and a half percent increase. And for July 2022, provides for a 2% increase. To the extent that the council members point about wanting to potentially discuss renegotiations of, you know, the MOU and the salary provisions, I would recommend the council set a closed session for that.
All right.
And with respect to the inflation escalator, I think the council member may have been thinking about the city attorney contract, which does include an escalator for inflation.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. May Protem Megachek, did you still have some questions?
I don't know if I No, I just don't know how to lower my hand at the moment.
Councilmember Lawler has a, I think she knows how to raise her hands. Please go ahead.
I do have a quick question. Is, where is the 600,000 carryover for the annex included? Is that included under maintenance or where, where would that?
Yeah, I put it under maintenance. It's right here. Let's see. It's part of this figure here. Was that summary?
The part of the
Yeah, it's part of this.
Yeah, the 975, okay.
I'm sorry, it's part of this building maintenance.
Oh, it's under building maintenance. Okay, thanks. That was just my question. Thank you.
Yeah, so what I wanted to share with council is a summary of where all our funds are going, source funds and and how we're going to pay for them. And so here's a listing of all the all the projects that's slated for next year. This, of course, is a general fund. And then on the matter that you voted on last week regarding the 310 of ongoing pavement management program, that's here. Housing Element Project, this is part of the carryover. Planning and Engineering E-Permit Tracking System. Well, there's no funds coming in for that. Annex Building, these are the source revenues that we've identified to pay for that. A part of this, incidentally, is part of that COVID-19 CARES Act relief funding. And then here is the Neighborhood Improvement Project Davies, Dave's Highway nine. And then City Hall. And totaling 1.3 million. And then here shows the summary of those expenses against those revenue streams. So here, the way I always
If I can stop you for a second, on the 18,000 for revenue, I think that's a Silicon Valley energy grant, isn't that? On the building NXC. And I know they're giving a second grant, so I don't know.
Yeah.
That is correct, Mayor.
That is the one that identified by the engineering budget.
Yeah, but that's the one that gave last year. There's another one coming this year, I believe.
That is the original grant that we had applied for, Mayor. We have not applied for an additional grant since that time.
Yeah, I thought you guys had put in, at least there's one open, if you want to take a look back to see, you can still apply for it.
We certainly will look into additional grant opportunities.
Thank you, sir. Please keep going unless somebody else has any questions at this time.
So the way, the way I'd like to present this is of all the projects that we're planning for next year. This is the housing element project. What's balanced due on that is about 118,000 on the planning and engineering E-permit tracking system. This is an enhancement to our existing E-permit system. We're looking at an extra 50,000 to add that. And then this is the annex building 600 neighborhood improvement project on Dave's Neighborhood 27, this is the leftover balance left to pay on that project. Highway nine improvement project, gap closure, 600,000. City Hall Parking Lot, I guess they call it GSI retrofit. That's new, 125,000. So in doing all those, we're going to spend 1.8 million on the general operations of the city hall, 3.8. On this column here, you'll show a surplus, meaning money that's being added to our general fund, 67,000. And then here, the 531 or 532,000 will be deducted from our reserves.
All right.
And so
If I could ask a question, what's the status of the Highway nine project? Is that going forward or is it going to be completed this year? Do we not?
Mayor, thank you for your question. We had commissioned last year's budget $64,000 for a study on how to, in a design, how to implement the Highway nine project. We are waiting for a response from Caltrans on that study. So we can follow up on that question with you. As far as funding for that project, we have no funding other than So we can follow up on that question with you. As far as funding for that project, we have no funding other than general general, our general funds account to potentially fund that project going forward at this time. We had applied for several grants in the past couple of years and we got closed, I think, last year from the federal government. We did not end up receiving anything. We did ask for funding of $550,000 this year from State Assembly Member Lowe's office, and we are, have yet to hear back on that source of funding. So there's still potential opportunity for us to, to get some funding, but at this point in time, it's, it's unfunded. And the only source of funds of council wish to move forward would be from the general fund.
So right now, this is, that's in this particular budget proposal, that's included here, the 573 that Steve just alluded to.
All right. So, so it really depends on whether you get the funding or not and whether how urgent that is to move forward with it. A customer returner, please go ahead.
Yes, uh, for, for the sake of clarity and transparency, I would like, instead of putting the annex, I mean, instead of putting it under maintenance, we should call out the annex separately. We should also call out the NICP separately. And, and it's okay to have the C Click Fix under software, but, but because we have the Los Gatos Police Department involved in this, I would like to call out NICP. The annex should be called out separately also. It is new construction, so we need to be able to track it. And therefore it should be shown separately. Thank you.
Other comment on that? And I, and I totally agree with Councilor Turner. That should be tracked separately. It's a big, big budget item. All right. Mr. Semer, you can take and make an order.
Yes, I, I did.
Please go ahead. Keep going.
So let's see. So that really summarizes.
Customer Luthold has his hand up. Please go ahead. Customer Luthold. And I hope you're okay stopping you as you go along. Are you okay with that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, thanks. Yeah, thank you. I did want to comment. I, I think yeah, pulling out the annex by name and mentioning that it really is capital improvement would be helpful. And also I wanted to ask about the deficit. Where does this leave our reserves if we end up pulling half a million dollars out of the reserves?
So here, we started with, let's see. Total reserve balance. So we started, let me make it smaller. We're starting from a base of 5.7 million. And if we did all those projects based on that CIP summary sheet, we're going to draw down 500,000 from our total reserves. So we would go from 5.7 to 5.3 million.
All right, thank you. And I believe our budget requirement is that we have one year of reserves. So this is really drawing it to the absolute bare bones. Is that correct?
Well, let's see, it'll be drawn from life. So let's see. Our reserve balance that we have for that is 3.5 million. Yes, we'll still have well above that that reserve limit.
What do you, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm highlighting the 3.5 million.
What do you mean by well above?
Well, we're still above.
Of what?
We're going above of the, above that reserve limit, that one-year reserve that council member, the Folds was referring to.
All right. May put them, I'm sorry, customer Luthold, are you, do you have any questions?
I'm good for the moment. Thanks.
May protect a check, please.
Thank you. If I look at what I'm looking at, at the bottom left says page one of two. And it says revenues in the general fund at 3.877 million. And then if I go to page two of two, it says total expenditures are 3.8 million, 3.809 for a net surplus of 67 thousand dollars. Finance Director, does that 3.8 million is, is that what we're basing our reserve requirement on? So should we have one year of what our general fund expenditures are, which would be 3.809 million?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're referring, okay. Let me just repeat what you just said. See. So this number here, this 3.8, I'm sorry.
Yeah, could you, could you make that a little bigger, please? So I'm sorry.
Okay. So what you're saying then is, in the nutshell, because this is our ongoing expenses, the 3.8 million. You're, what you're saying is this number here, instead of being 3.5, should sorry, it's, it's probably making you dizzy on your side, but this number here should be 3.8. So let's see, if I add these two, deduct that, yeah, we're about 3.7 net. And how I got that goes, I added these two numbers here, the, the 3.5 million plus the 600. Those two minus the 500,000 gets you about about 3.7. So we're about 100,000 shy.
Okay. We're not trying to solve a problem now. We're just trying to understand it. And we're also trying to let you know what the various council members would be looking for in an, in an analysis to support the budget when we finalize it. So I think that having an understanding of, of that calculation and showing it explicitly would be a good thing.
Okay.
Where we are relative to our reserve policy.
Yeah, I, that, that's very helpful, your protection check. And cuz if you're looking at what the reserve should be, you want to make sure in the expenditure column that you have, it's just the regular expenditures and no capital improvement expenses are in that particular column.
Right, non-recurring, non-recurring expenses versus recurring.
I think you've probably done it that way, but just to be sure.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions or Mr. Semer, I can proceed? Mr. Sark, please go ahead. Continue.
Oh, that's all I got. I just wanted, I just wanted to summarize this, just to show where, you know, you're, where you're drawing down from your reserve balance. And that's what this column represents.
Okay. Sounds great. Take you with the presentation. Let's come back to council. Are there any other questions of Mr. Semer or anybody else? None. Let's go to the anybody, any of the attendees have any questions? This is open to them at this time. Hands raised. Are they still with us or at the left? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. Coming back to council for further discussion. May put them, sorry, council member Luthold, please go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, so just a couple, I guess, one quick comment that relates to the, to the budget planning issue. And that is appreciate, I do appreciate all of the hard work that goes into this process. And, and the early start in getting this done. Looks like we're off to a good start on this. I do want to request Mr. Samranus and Mr. Leonardi's. Please watch the calendar carefully, take the input from tonight and get back to us with the proposed budget for discussion at a time prior to the last possible meeting before we have to adopt. And don't push us to a special session and don't put us over a barrel on having to approve a budget on short notice. I think, like I say, I think we're off to a great start, so let's keep up the momentum to get it done early. Yeah, so that everything goes really smoothly because it's always stressful to hit budget and hit our last meeting of the fiscal year. So those are my input on this. Thank you.
Yeah, those are very valuable comments. Thank you. And also you do have a finance committee, so the finance committee can get involved in some of this to make sure things are displayed to the, are clearer to all, all the council members and to the, to the rest of our city. Any other comments? All right. I don't have any other comments. This is a discussion item. City Manager, Steve Leonardis, thank you for putting the effort into getting this to us. And if you have any further comments, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to add that we will be bringing back another version with the council's feedback from this evening to council on our June 7th meeting. So we will have this again, and then we will be adopting the final budget on June 21st. Hopefully.
Sounds good. Anything else, anybody? If not, I guess we're done with our.
I have a question.
I, I'm sorry. Yeah, cause of turn, sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, well, um, when we go to our next session, I think you said it was the 21st. Are we going to have firm bids from the contractor for the annex rather than a guesswork?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember Turner. And to answer your question, I do not believe we will have firm bids by then. However, we did council did vote in the budget of 2021 to set aside the 600,000, which was then again carried over last year, which is being proposed, carried over again this year for the annex building. In addition to that, there are the $18,000 grant and then 160,000, I think it's 160 or 170,000 dollar Prop 68 grant that is also reflected in the budget as carried over. So almost $800,000 of the original funds from a couple of years back. But I don't believe the bidding process will be complete. So I would imagine it would just be carryover again. And then when the bids were to come in, council would decide from there what to do at that point in time.
All right. Can I make a suggestion? I think one of the things that we ought to look at is I noticed in the, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to, to make it to the last session. But we had a bid from a contractor and it wasn't signed by anybody. It wasn't signed by the finance manager or the city manager. I would like us to, to be a little bit cautious on those things, right? That when, when we are contracting with outside people, that we actually sign the agreement rather than leave it open-ended. Thank you.
You're, you're on mute.
Also a little, sorry, I wasn't telling you that you were on mute. So go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Yeah, just again, on the input on this, because we are going to have a limited number of sessions going forward. I think I would be interested in knowing as we come into the next session how, how we might adjust this budget so that we don't have a deficit if that is what the council chooses. So where would be the give and take? What would be the flexibility? Or the projects that would go on hold so as to run without a deficit if that's the council's choice? And then, as I mentioned earlier, which projects would go on hold or, or could be delayed until we are certain of the COVID relief, that other 400,000 or 500,000 dollars coming in? If you could just, when we come back on this, have that very clearly called out for us so we know what our options are and how we order things as we're going forward. So, thank you.
Councilor Turner.
Yes, I, I also wanted to point out one thing. The $600,000 that we originally had included $200,000 in grants. So what we're doing here is we're double counting the grants. So I want to make sure that that's accurate, right? When, when we come back the next time. I, I don't want to be saying, yes, we did 600,000 and we, we took into consideration the $200,000 grant. And now we're double counting our grants. We have to be accurate in our figures.
Anybody wish to comment on that?
I agree, Council Turner.
All right, thank you.
I was going to say that in response to that comment, we obtained the grant funding after council had voted to allocate the $600,000 for the building. So that was sort of icing on the cake at the time. We weren't even sure we were going to get those grant funds. Originally, we had estimated that the building would have a maximum budget of 600,000 back in 2020, which was realistic back then, but by the time it got to bids in 2021, the bids came in higher. But we are not counting the grant money twice as part of the 600 and in addition to the 600. It was 600,000 out of the general fund and it was close to $200,000 in separate grant money, which was subsequently received after the initial $600,000 was allocated by council.
I, I guess what we can do is go back and listen to the recording and see, and if you can get us a date sometime when the grant came in, that, that may be helpful to look at it. And it may or may not make a difference because we're talking about a capital improvement rather than expense here. Any other comments? Okay. Is there anything else you need from us, Mr. Leonardi?
Well, thank you, Council, for your thoughtful comments and deliberation on this. And as I said, we are looking forward to bringing it back on June 7th. And we will tighten everything up for you then before the final rendition comes back on July 21st.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Samranus. Appreciate that.
June 21st.
June 21st, yes. All right. So we'll close this item out. This is just a discussion item. There's no motion or anything else that needs to be done. It's a study session and we appreciate the information. Committee Commission Reports, we'll start with the report on the mayor put in, Brian Rackett. Attended a couple of meetings this time.
Yes, what I'll do is I'll go through the, the list that I have set out in front of me. First thing is the VTA Policy Advisory Committee met last week and I attended remotely. Chair Kitty Moore from Cupertino facilitated drafting of two resolutions that included proximity to a higher density housing. So I got that input into the resolution. The other thing I did was I attended Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting since Mayor Elie could not attend. And it was my first live meeting in Cupertino City Hall. So there was, there were four of us that were there in person. So they're going with a, with a hybrid meeting. And as you can imagine, the RECO, REACH codes were front and center at that moment. There were two meetings that occur back to back. It's West Valley Clean Water, which is basically the Storm Sewer. We approved the budget for 2022, 23. And then immediately after that, we have West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. And we approved the RFP to. And we approved the RFP to be issued. And it was, it was actually issued the the following week. In that, we approved a rate increase for twenty twenty three. And the rate increase with your West Valley Collections and Recycling is at eighty, the rates go at eighty percent of CPI. And then there's a catch up year every fifth year. And this is the catch up year. So we'll be seeing some rate increases going forward in that. And then also regarding services for the city of Montesereno in that RFP. The executive director will be meeting with our Better Streets Commission to review a possible road impact fee. That's one. And then another service in the RFP is to have four public garbage cans that would be picked up with the town of LaScatos Public garbage can pickups every day of each week. So we have not had that in the past and we could include that in the RFP this year. And I was thinking that there's sometimes issues with people walking and and dog waste and that sort of thing. So if we had four garbage cans that were collected, that would be, that would be helpful. And and there would be, that would all be included in the rate. So I think those are the meetings that I attended and the key points and some feedback from those. If there's any questions, I'm open.
Thank you. Yeah, what we're doing is just go down the names and you can cover all the meetings you've attended or that you want to talk about. Councilmember Lawler, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. There, I I haven't, I don't have anything to report. We we still don't have West Valley Water Commission listed on this list, so I would, I would ask that that be included. As far as the youth commission goes, we finished for the year last week. And Silicon Valley Animal Control Authority, I have a meeting next week. And then I do have something I want to talk about with the youth commission, I think that, but that'll be on a future agenda item. So that is all. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. So if you could make a note of adding that to this Valley Water Commission on the main section for our lawler.
May Mayor, if I could have a question?
Sure.
Councilmember Lawler, I believe that there are grants that are available through Valley Water every year and and the deadline is is April and our intention from the Finance Committee, Ad hoc Finance Committee, is to try to obtain some grant money next year. And I just wanted to put that on your radar screen if that's okay.
Of course, thank you.
And on the radar screen of our city manager also, Michelle and Otis. You may already have it on our radar screen, but that's a good reminder. Alright, so I'll go to next is Councilmember Luthold.
Yeah, nothing to report this time around.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. You're on mute?
I would like to make a comment and not necessarily a report. And this has to do with the the presence of of Paul, I mean, Phil Levine and Susan Ng. They have actually written to us at least six or seven times in the past. So I think one of the things we really need to do is to be proactive in getting his concerns. And talk to him personally, sit down with him, and maybe one or two of the council members can participate in that. He has questions about how does, how do you hold contractors responsible? And he believes that that's a weak link, that we have no accountability. So I think these are things that we can look towards and and try to solve. And because this will not be just his problem, it could be a future problem. So let's, let's smooth out our processes here if if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And maybe city manager, you know, just can guide us to how to best address that issue. It doesn't have to be right now, but later on at the future time will be okay. Yeah, we do have an operation and outreach committee that's Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Lawler. So may not be a bad idea for two of you to get together and give us some suggestions or thoughts on that. Alright, Councilmember Luthold.
Thank you. Yes, it sounds like we're transitioning to council member comments. And I wanted to make a very similar comment to what Councilmember Turner just brought up on my list. Both related to Mr. Levine and Miss Ng's concerns, but also just out and about in the neighborhood. The the construction hours is not matching what our requirements are. I've seen the construction at the corner of Dave's and Winchester getting started at six fifteen in the morning. The construction at Dave's and Carroll Court is much better. They get there early, but they wait and don't really seem to start. And they're very careful about noise. But it was concerning to me to see the brand new project there at the corner of Dave's and Winchester with the contractors scraping that lot and about to launch into a complete rebuild at six fifteen in the morning. So I think we're gonna, if we aren't getting neighbor complaints yet, we're gonna get them. And this comes back to the issue of posting the hours, making the homeowners sign on, making people who get business permits sign on, making all of our contractors sign on and post them on the gate of the job site. If we're going to have job hours starting at eight AM, we need to be serious about that. And I've brought this up before, we may want to consider if that's a serious problem, we may want to make our hours begin earlier because contractors do begin early. I know during COVID, I suggested that and was shut down on the idea because people like their quiet neighborhood. But I think we need to revisit that issue if eight AM is really problematic, get the community involved and make a decision, or we need to enforce it, one or the other. So that's my comments. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, this is general, your reports and comments kind of mixed together. So feel free to make comments also at the same time. That'll be good. Cost member, Lawler, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to echo Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Luthold with respect to Phil Levine and Susan. It it would be nice if we could find a way to hold contractors accountable or at least have some sort of record of their behavior. So moving forward, absolutely, we should address this. And I would love to hear from our city manager what the status is once it's his report time. Thanks.
Okay. Right. So I think we've covered everybody's comments except mine. So I'll make mine. Cities Association Meeting, which has a couple of issues, one had to do with raising the fees for all the cities because their budget is going out of control. Our share is about sixty five hundred. It used to be four percent of the annual budget, which was around hundred eighty thousand, but the budget has now gone up to two hundred eighty six thousand. So we made, you know, I made the point that we're not going to be responsible for paying that kind of a percentage, since we are only like point one seven percent of the population. So what they've done is increased the budget, but they've not increased the fees due from the small cities. So San Jose's share, for example, has gone from thirteen thousand a year to fifty thousand a year. So but they're still only paying twenty percent when they're fifty percent of the population, but it's a good leap, you know, just to get them to do that. Our shares went from four percent of the budget to about, now it's down to about two percent of the budget. So it's the amount is the same, but the percentage shares less because we're not paying anymore. So and I have asked them to consider because what what we are concerned about is the annual budget share, four thousand, six thousand is not a significant effect because you do have some benefit from being in the cities association. But the the real risk is the liability issue. So I've asked them to consider it and then maybe this city council, as the council, we can look at it again to see if it's what staying in the cities association or not and have a more expanded discussion on that subject. The other issue that I have is the property tax basis that the city of Montesereno gets from the Santa Clara County is only six point one percent. Los Gares gets thirteen point thirteen percent or so from whatever they pay out. And San Jose gets much a higher percentage. So this got fixed about ten fifteen years ago. So we need to look at it to see if you can get that increase. So initiated discussions with supervisor. And we'll see how far that goes. That's that's basically my report. And are there any other council member comments or discussions? If not, I guess we will go to the city manager's report. Here's your time, city manager. The notice to help us out with the issues that have come up today and seem to be coming up.
Well, thank you. Just want to remind the public that we have a box in front of City Hall entrance to place your ballots for the June seventh primary election. The box is secure, put there by the Santa Clara County Register of Voters and they empty that box three days a week currently. As it gets closer to the election in the next two weeks, they will be emptying it every single day. So your ballot will be collected and it will be safe. So please bring your ballots to Montesereno City Hall and vote. The other item I want to bring forward this evening is a special meeting one week from tonight. That is May twenty fourth, starting at six PM. And it will be a joint meeting of the city council and the Site and Arc Commission. And it will be in reference to our housing element as well as our SB nine requirements and proposed perhaps improvements to SB nine for the city of Montesereno. So mark your calendars for that one. I hope the meeting is well attended by the public as well. And we will be publicizing that very soon. And to address some of the comments regarding the construction, so this has been what we call a operational improvement or a process improvement that we've been considering here at a staffing level for some time. We have included in your budget tonight a new position for a building inspector slash code enforcement person. And right now we have those two roles filled by contractors through CSG Group. And to have more of a presence, I think we need somebody who is a a Montesereno City employee. And those numbers, again, were included for your consideration this evening. We'll come back again for discussion at at the next meeting. But we're well aware of the improvements that could be made when it comes to Mr. Levine's project and his situation. I empathize with them. They are surrounded by construction. However, as Mr. Levine stated this evening, the hours around his property have improved. We have been enforcing what was considered to be early starts with deliveries and and services coming before eight AM. So I think that has improved for Mr. Levine and his wife. There were comments made about a wall and whether that meant the design requirements and whether the contractor was you know, getting some special privileges. We had our building official, we had our city engineer, we had our city planner, we had our code enforcement person out at Mr. Levine's property or at the neighboring property and have all had numerous inquiries into the situation over there. We found no items to be in violation. I know that Mr. Levine is not happy and his, and he may want to discuss it further with council and staff, and that's fine. We're we're open to those those discussions. There were comments brought up about posting construction hour signs. I do remember a council discussion, I think it was summer of twenty twenty, about increasing the window for construction hours, making them earlier, making the days longer, et cetera, et cetera. That didn't win the blessing of the council at the time moving forward. But back to the signs being posted in more than one language, staff had been looking at this idea and there's a couple of things that make it difficult to implement. Number one, we have three hundred and eighty eight open jobs in our city right now, believe it or not. Interest rates are low, the economy is good. Somebody mentioned earlier in the evening that Montesereno is not suffering the same economic issues as other places. Those might all be true statements. But in order for us to put three hundred and eighty eight signs out there, it'd be a significant expense to the city. And it would be a significant amount of upkeep. And how many languages would you like them printed in? So that, I think, is something that hasn't been an issue other than this one individuals area. And again, that individual's testimony this evening was the hours have been improved and we have been enforcing with the means that we have to dissuade the contractors from starting or delivering or doing whatever they do before the time. Councilmember Luthold brought up something interesting that I will have to go out or we will have to go out and research about the corner of Winchester and Dave's. So we made note of that this evening. The other thing about the posting of signs, we would be the only jurisdiction in all of Santa Clara County that would be posting such a sign like that. So something we should probably consider, something we've never done. Again, I think the better alternative is getting the staff person out there and having more of a presence, somebody that is here every single day from the hours of, you know, beginning early, that person will get to choose their own hours. Maybe they go out at seven AM and they're they're done at four PM, but they will be out in the neighborhood. They will be a presence in the neighborhood. They will be dressed in Montesereno. You know, obviously, a city personnel uniform or shirt and jacket going out and looking proactively for people who may be doing unlicensed work, people who are, you know, working outside of the hours, people who are or or persons, I should say, who are just perhaps violating or answering to all the complaints of violations produced by the public and or council and others. So I think that is a you know, a significant process improvement that has not been present in Montesereno for a long time, probably since the era of Howard Bell. Last but not least, I also want to empathize with the public. I mean, it's been a tough two and a half years with the pandemic or however long it's been. More residents are home more. And again, with the the low interest rates and the robust stock market in Silicon Valley, all those kinds of things, people are doing more improvements than doing, I mean, we've had record building department activities and and revenues and such. So we've been doing our best to stay on top of these things. It's going to be hard to catch everybody and keep everyone happy, but we are doing our best to to keep the community happy with the resources we have, which amounts to six employees plus one city manager and three contractors. And I'm hoping that, you know, we always want to do better going forward, improve our services going forward. And I'm hoping that council adopts the budget with the new position, this will make a significant improvement in the, in that area of service. Montesereno primarily is a building counter, a planning counter, a finance department, a clerks department, city manager department. We don't have a police department. We don't have, you know, we have Santa Clara County Fire. We don't have a lot of other departments, libraries and public works and things that other cities have. But we have a building and a planning department. And we do approve a lot of stuff very quickly compared to other cities. I think most people would be very the feedback that we get on a regular basis here at City Hall has been very complimentary. We approve housing projects quicker than anybody. Our plan checks go through quicker than anybody. Our planning department turnaround is very quick. And our engineering also does a very good job. So we get a lot of praise from the public for our service that you may not be aware of as a council, but we take pride in our modesty and we look forward to continuing to get the praise and doing a good job for the public and improving the few issues we have outside that have gone beyond our control a little bit.
Thank you, Michelle and Otis. And Michelle, did you?
Oh, sorry, Mayor. So something that I actually talked to our city planner.
Can you speak up a little bit? Can you speak up a little bit? Little muffler for some reason.
So sorry. Um, so something that I actually uh ran by our city planner about a week or so ago was, so we e-blast to notify the public, for those that we actually have their email. Uh, we e-blast and we let people know of, you know, um, any notices. So one thing that I told her, we can possibly create a mail-in e-blast list for our contractors and do maybe like friendly reminders. So that's one thing I talked to her about doing. Um, that's something we can, you know, just go through all our active uh permits. And, you know, because when they're submitting at this point, we are taking an email. Uh, our building consultant does email them when uh, you know, their building permits are approved or when they receive permits, so that's one way we can remind them in a very friendly way when holidays are coming up so that they know they shouldn't be working, because we acknowledge, you know, the holidays and we can post that and just do friendly reminders, um, you know, on a monthly basis or so, that, you know, what the hours are um for a city. So that's that's an idea um that we want to throw out there.
Alright, great. Thank you for those suggestions and uh I I had a couple of questions for Mr. Lenaros, what what uh or what is on these complaints that are there for uh construction hours and all that? Uh, is is a C-click Fix available for uh people to put those complaints out there, and is that being monitored?
Thank you, Mayor, for the question. Um, what is now being called Fix It Montessorino has a number of categories. Road repairs, vegetation removal, um, sign repairs, uh, you know, debris in roadways, those types of things. I don't think we have specifically a it it's not necessarily meant to be a line where you report um complaints for construction hours starting early or such, although anybody can go in there and and type a general inquiry. So it is available, um, but it is mostly geared towards um maintenance of the city. Falling trees and those types of things.
Yeah, it might be helpful to put that in there too, and I see Councilmember Turner shaking her head too, so she probably have a comment. But uh, let me, let me just uh Yeah, there's there's a lot of activity going on, and I suspect you'll have a lot more activity as a more because of SB nine and the A-back thing that we're uh we're going through. Alright, uh, got uh, mayor per time, make a check at his hand, hands up, please go ahead. So you're on mute?
I think that's a great idea to do an e-blast as a gentle reminder uh prior to holidays and uh periodically to ask people to, the contractors, to uh be careful of construction hours. I think that's a great idea. Um, the other thing in terms of Fix It Montisirino, when I looked at other jurisdictions and what they include in there, and I'll use the generic term C-click Fix implementation. Um, I saw that there was a category for construction that was that people suspected was non-not covered under a permit. And I recommended that we include that as a category. So there is the opportunity to to do that, and there's a precedent in other cities. So I just wanted to make those couple of comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for the report, Steve, and uh, Goisy. I appreciate everyone's effort in in trying to provide the best services, and I look forward to uh improve improving, uh, especially with respect to code enforcement and having a full-time person. And I love your idea about e-blast. I think that's great. We're always, we're always striving to be best, so thank you.
Alright, Councilmember Luton?
Yeah, um, a couple of comments um based on what uh the city manager brought up. Um, number one, I I want to uh agree and um congratulate the staff. Um, the reality of what Montisirino's services are is amazing. Um, I had a discussion a while back uh with Swimming Pool Contractor. They said they were looking at sixteen months in other jurisdictions, and we're getting uh results in less than thirty days here. Um, so that's the the scope of how much better our city is than many of the other cities. Um, and so I want to recognize uh the city staff, uh, city manager for that. Um, and I think they do get the feedback, but I don't think that they necessarily even know how great uh they do in Montisirino in providing services. So um, that's one comment. The other is, uh, Mr. Lenaros mentioned the idea, and it sounded like he had interpreted it as uh the city of Montisirino posting signs in various languages and so forth. Uh, that's not what I had in mind at all. What I had in mind is that as part of our building permit requirements, the contractors have to post the signs. I noticed uh there at Dave's and Carroll Court, uh, on the fence, there is a very uh detailed sign that the contractor provided about COVID protocols. Um, and I envision a very similar sign that the contractor would have to put on the site regarding the working hour, so that every time they open the gate to a gated um full remodel type uh situation, uh, whoever's opening that gate is looking at that sign, but we don't provide the sign. We just provide the template and the contractor has to post it. So uh, simpler, low cost, um, and all we have to do is design that and then require it as part of the permitting. That was my idea signage-wise. Um, one more comment, um, which is really to future agenda items. Um, and that is, um, although I don't really want to put more burden on staff and council members, uh, I do think that we should have a closed session prior to getting close to budget finalization uh as uh the city attorney discussed regarding whether or not we need to deal with the general MOU or other CPI type of issues for employees. So um, if we can, uh, if uh other council members agree, we should probably look for a date and schedule a closed session, at least for informational purposes for us to begin those discussions. That's it. Thanks.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I I just wanted to say that the C-click Fix software allows you to configure any type of problem you want to to report. For example, the problem with construction. The other one we can do is also report problems with the Neighborhood Watch group, so a particular group. So it's a bit, it's it's very flexible, and I think um Michelle has been working on this. And are you ready to give us a report, maybe the next, the next session, the next council session? Michelle?
Michelle's actually um not online right now. She's not feeling well, so, but I can, I can check in with her about um preparing a report for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler?
Uh, well, are we moving on to future agenda items?
Uh, if there are any more comments or questions of the Michelle and others or staff, you can we can do those, otherwise you can go to the next one. Uh, Alyssa, and if the city manager has any other comments, please go ahead.
I am done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And uh, yeah, let's go to future agenda items. Thank you, Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to bring up uh the Youth Commission. As a future agenda item, I think it would be prudent for us to update the attendance requirements as well as potentially reduce the amount of meetings. It's been quite challenging getting everyone to participate as Goisy knows. Uh, so maybe if we make it a little bit more reasonable for our uh commissioners as well as, you know, makes it easier for them to attend, maybe not rather than, what is, what do we have, nine meetings a year, maybe six meetings? Anyway, I'd, I think we need to, um, as a future agenda item, we need to address uh how we can change this to have better attendance.
Yeah, how soon would you like that? We heard the Councilmember Lawler?
Well, you know, they uh were accepting applications, and the first meeting, Goisy, would be August or September, August. So yeah, we should probably have this taken care of before uh June, by June twenty-first.
Alright, so we should probably put it on there so that the the people who apply know what they're lying for. Okay, excellent suggestion. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I would like to agendize probably after we've done with our arena numbers. Uh, I would like to present to the council some of the um pushback that SCAG has had with SB nine and SB ten as well as uh we're we're starting to see some of the northern California cities also pushing back like like Woodside so that we're all aware of what's happening in uh with respect to Newsom's SB nine and SB ten.
So you want that agendized after we go through our A-back stuff, or should we be pushing back, decide to push back before that?
Well, I I'm not, well, the 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 lawsuit has has basically started. However, everything will go on the November twenty twenty-four um election. So the state initiative to push back on that will 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 go in front of the voters in twenty twenty-four. So there's not an urgent need to do it right away, but I just wanted to to make you all aware of what's happening.
Alright, sounds good. Any other future agenda items? I think one of the agenda items I'm pointing to, but it should probably be in the August meeting, is the Cities Association, where we should continue being part of that association or not. Or whether we need to put some kind of a guard band to make sure our liability doesn't exceed our population uh percentage or close to that. Okay. Any other future agenda items? If none, I guess you're ready to adjourn. Anybody else have any other comments? Alright, thank you, everybody else. We'll adjourn the meeting. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Thank you, Goisy. Thank you for your help in stepping in at last.
One, bye.
Bye bye.